So it is 6:30 PM and I would like to officially call to order the special planning commission meeting of August 19th. Let the record reflect that all commissioners are present, including Vice Chair Armando. And with that, we will have Vice Chair Armando lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. And with that, this is the time for presentation items and Director of Community Development, Gail Ackerman, will introduce this item.
Yes, we have one presentation this evening. It's the Public Works Quarterly Update from April to June of 2021, and Taylor Abernathy is here from the Public Works Department.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Again, yes, my name's Taylor Abernathy. I'm the Principal Civil Engineer here for the City of Lake Forest, and I run the capital improvement program. Hopefully you guys had a chance to take a look at the report and just the variety of projects that we have going on. This last quarter was finishing up our 2019 to 2021 program. There are a few projects that the city has carrying over into our new 2128 program as we've just started a new seven-year CIP. Just to kind of highlight a couple of them for you guys, we recently finished our Slurry Seal project in the neighborhoods of Portola Hills, which is known as Zone G, and then in the middle swath of the city is known as C. Zone C, those have finished up. We're in the process of working on some of the Neighborhood Park Improvement Program projects. Currently, Darren Park is in the process of being renovated. Mont Berry and Pebble Creek are actually, have pretty much finished up at this point, and so those are being back on service for our residents to enjoy. But with that, here to ask any or answer any questions that anyone would have about our program.
Sure. Thank you so much. I'll start to my right with Vice Chair Armando.
Just a quick question on a couple of the intersections that they're going to put, the protective-permissive signals. They haven't done that yet, correct?
That is correct. So we issued a contract here, I think the last meeting, the meeting prior for the City Council awarded that, and we're in the process of getting, we had a pre-construction meeting. So here, fast forward, because now I'm talking about three months ago, we'll just tell you where we're at, really. We had our pre-construction meeting, and now we're on for ordering materials. It's traffic signal equipment, and right now, even though COVID, it's still had us delays on all material procurement across the board, so we're waiting for them to get the material on hand, and then we'll get them out, actually making the improvements at those intersections.
And then, at some point, are they going to have an evaluation as to whether it made things worse or better or whatever, and then make a decision whether to keep that?
Yeah. The program itself, the traffic department will review afterwards. They'll look at it at three, six, nine, and then 12 months to see if the program is something that they want to continue going forward. I know that from the council's side, they've looked at it and have talked about future, potential future iterations, but those will be considered after we look at a review of them.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Any other questions from the other commissioners? Okay. Commissioner Fuentes, and then Commissioner Villock.
On the urban forestry management, it's, you say that you have already taken some of the dead eucalyptus trees away, so there are more to come?
There's, that project was a two-phase project. The first one, which is the phase that's been completed previously, we removed all the dead trees that were there and identified as part of their study. The second phase is a replanting phase. That actually just hit the, we opened bids here last week, and so we're in the process of preparing a council item for award or city manager award. I don't know what the dollar amount exactly was on that one, but they'll be replanting in, for the second phase.
Oh, okay. It just said it would remove the 207, and then it says it's done, but that's all one in the same, the 207?
So yeah, it removed all of the dead identified plants, and then there is a second phase that's going to replant because we-
Because that's what we do.
Yeah. We want to bring it back.
All right, thanks.
More appropriately.
And then Commissioner Villock?
Thanks, Chair. I just wanted to say, thanks for moving those PPLTs along. That was something that's been long in the works, probably two-plus years from the plant, or the traffic commission. So those two locations identified, I couldn't see them getting worse than they are today because of it only better, so I'm looking forward to seeing the studies and how those come out, and hopefully continue to roll these out in those qualified intersections throughout the city so we can keep traffic flowing. So, thank you.
Any other comments? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
So this is the time for public comments to address the commission on matters not on the agenda and within jurisdiction of the planning commission. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. If you would like to participate, please fill out a speaker card and turn it into the commission secretary, and your name will be called. Speaker cards are available at the agenda review table by the entrance. Madam Commission Secretary, have we received any speaker cards?
One received.
Okay.
I'm sorry, none received for this item.
Oh, none received, okay. Thank you so much. All right. Well, with that, we will now go ahead and open the public hearing for item two, and Director Gail Ackerman will introduce this item.
Yes, this is a site development permit for the development of a 65-unit senior affordable apartment complex, and Amy Stonich has a staff report this evening.
Good evening, Chair and members of the commission. The application for your consideration tonight is Site Development Permit 6215435. It's a request to construct the Meadows Senior Affordable Apartments, which consist of two-story, 65-unit apartment complex, including 64 senior affordable units and one market rate manager's unit and associated site improvements. Seven of the affordable units will be for permanent supportive housing. The project site is located on a 2.6-acre lot in the Nacasi Plan community at the southeast corner of the intersection of Rancho Parkway and Bake Parkway. An EIR, the vesting tentative tract, a development agreement, and an affordable housing implementation plan were previously approved by the council in January of 2020. The senior affordable apartments will be for rent units available for seniors aged 62 or older who qualify based on affordability for very low and low-income status. The developers, CNC Development Company LLC and the Waterford Group, will construct, maintain, and operate the affordable units in accordance with the requirements of the Affordable Housing Implementation Plan and the development agreement with the city. The apartments are sited in a U-shaped building around an open courtyard. Amenities located within the courtyard include barbecues, shade structures, bocce ball courts, a fire pit, and open lawn area for residents of the facility. The building is designed in a California contemporary architecture with stucco and faux wood tile, similar to the design of the surrounding neighborhoods in the Meadows. Landscaping and walls were previously approved as part of the master plan. In addition, the project includes trees, shrubs, and other landscaping throughout the project boundary, in the parking lot, and at the base of the building. A six-foot block wall at the boundary is anticipated to buffer noise from the traffic on Bake Parkway from neighboring industrial office uses in Pacific Commerce Center. The project includes 76 parking spaces, which are situated behind the building and adjacent to the park on the south side of the building. Since the zoning code does not address senior affordable housing for parking, the applicant prepared a parking demand study in support of the project. The study analyzed comparable parking demand rates from ITE, nearby cities, and other city code requirements. Based on the findings, the project exceeds the necessary parking with four extra spaces. Findings have been made for conformance with the general plan, zoning code, and with agreements as applicable to the project. In addition, the draft resolution approving the site development permit includes recommended conditions of approval specific to the senior affordable apartments. With that, staff recommends that the planning commission find the project exempt from CEQA and adopt a resolution approving the site development permit. Thank you for your time. I'm available to answer questions, and the applicant is here in the audience as well.
Thank you so much. Before we begin with our questions, have we received any comments from members of the public on this item?
Yes. Todd Cottle.
If you could just state your name and city of residence per the record, that'd be greatly appreciated.
Good evening. My name is Todd Cottle, representing CNC Development. I live in the city of Tustin, and here with a number of members of our development team, design team, to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. With that, I'll go ahead and move to my commissioners, and I'll start to my right this time with Commissioner Ludden.
I was just curious, is this project now fully funded? Is it ready, as it moves forward, or are you still requesting funding for it?
Yes, sir. Our next step in the process, after hopefully receiving entitlement approval then, would be to move on and apply for our financing. The next step is to apply to the State of California Tax Exempt Bond Financing and Tax Credit Allocation. Next application round for that is September 9th.
So how long do you anticipate it might take to get the project funded?
That's a good question as well. The tax credit program, tax exempt bond program, is a competitive process at the state level. We have in our plans to apply for multiple rounds. Now, we're cautiously optimistic that we could be successful in the first round, but it's dependent upon other projects, other developments that show up and compete within that financing round. But the project, as it's designed, as the financing's been put together, gives it a very good opportunity to secure tax credits, but it's not a certain process to go through.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Armando.
Yeah, just basically, just real quick, who decides who's going to live here, whether they do the qualifications? Is that you guys, or the city? Is that the state, or how is that determined?
We do, with certain requirements that come from both the city and the state. CNC Development, we've been in the business of building, providing, owning, and operating affordable housing for 30 years. We actually self-manage our properties through our own management company, so when we say an onsite manager will be living onsite, that onsite manager works for us, reports to us. Onsite manager qualifies the residents who will live there, not only upfront when they first move in, but on an annual basis.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fuentes?
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Villock?
Thanks, Chair. I have a few questions for staff. Can, Gail, could you explain to me just the process and how this was an item on the regular agenda from our meeting this month, earlier this month, and how the reason why it was taken off and how the special meeting came to be?
Yeah, we were still working on the staff report, and it wasn't ready to be advertised for the public hearing, so we requested that the commission consider a special meeting, that's this evening, in order to ensure that they could apply for funding on September 9th. Had we waited for the next regular planning commission meeting, they would miss their funding window, so we're certainly appreciative of tonight's special meeting.
And then was that in regards to the waiting for the traffic engineering report?
Yes.
So when this came through the first time, was that not completed?
I don't believe it was, we had fully planned, checked the project at that time, and so it was identified later in the process that the provision of parking had to be substantiated with the traffic study, that we actually had to have engineering documentation because it was going to the planning commission.
Okay. And in regards to the parking requirement, I, from what I understand, is that this type of housing was not in the area plan for the Nacasi properties?
The, all of the developments in the OSA wrote area plans, so each one is unique. It had a different author, a different architectural group. Several projects in the OSA had affordable housing. For example, in the Portola area plan, they identified the parking ratio. In this particular area plan, it wasn't identified. They had some development standards for the senior housing, but they didn't identify the parking ratio. So the planning commission, in essence, hadn't pre-approved the parking ratio. So when the area plan is silent, we go to the zoning code, and when we looked up senior housing for the zoning code, there is not a requirement. It's not a use that's listed. It's kind of a specific use with its very specific parking requirements, and so that's why we went down the avenue that said, do a technical study to establish what the correct parking ratio would be.
Okay. And then, in regards to, if it was a residential, how many parking spaces would it require?
Well, according to the city's zoning ordinance, if there was nothing different in the area plan, the city's zoning ordinance has, if it's multifamily, two different ways to calculate parking. One is based on square footage of the units, and one is based on the bedroom count. Typically, on an affordable project, we use the square footage requirement, but that's what we have. We don't have anything specific to affordable in the city's parking ordinance, and certainly that changes a lot of the parking dynamics.
So what would it have been for residential, based on what you just explained?
I don't have that calculation.
We calculated 84.
84? And, yeah, and what's it in there right now as with the?
76.
I know that in the engineering study, that it did correlate to another one, as you mentioned, in Portola Hills, as well as some neighboring cities as well. Has there been any follow-up to see if that parking's been sufficient for that? I mean, it's one thing to point to something that has previously been approved, but...
Well, the Portola Center project hasn't been constructed yet, so we don't have anything anecdotally. We did visit, staff visited several years ago, a senior affordable project in the city of San Clemente, and asked the onsite manager about the parking policies, and had a chance to really feel and see that particular project, and there were no parking issues. The income levels that you need to be able to become a resident are low, and plus we have a senior population, that it's unusual to find a lot of cars in a project like this. A car is very expensive, once you have the insurance and the gas and everything else, and these are very low and low-income-level seniors. I know the, Mr. Cottle, they have had a lot of experience developing senior projects, and he may have additional information about actual projects they have and what their experience has been.
Okay. I guess for the feel test for me, it, I guess I've never gone to, my grandparents lived in senior, it wasn't affordable housing, but senior housing and apartments I've lived in, condos I lived in, I've never really traversed into a neighborhood and said, there's just too much parking here. There's just too much. And I know with seniors, especially down to 62, people are living much older, they have a bunch of families, it sounds like wonderful amenities that are in this place to have barbecues and such with family members, that I feel like it should be closer to that 84 amount and not be down to that lower, less amount. That one's just not sitting with me. Thank you.
All right. And then, actually, could we have, given your experience in managing and building these kinds of units, could you speak more to that parking situation and the adequacy of that?
Happy to. As I mentioned before, not only have we developed over 30 years, but we also own, manage, and operate, so we have a very good understanding of our, our usage of our communities, specifically affordable communities, whether it's families, whether it's seniors. Our senior communities, on average, with a similar unit mix to this, and within your county, which is also important, given the levels of affordability, live at approximately .7 spaces per unit. And so as a result of parking, we're at 1.16 spaces per unit. Based upon our experience, we would anticipate that we would have similar parking ratio and have excess parking spaces when you're, when you're there. 62 and above is important to point out. Certain senior communities are 55 and above, definitely at that end of the range, you are getting a higher vehicle usage. Starting at 62, though, we do start to see a decline within our resident population as the affordable. The other important aspect to mention is also the permanent supportive housing units, which was a requirement of the city that's being incorporated into this development. Those are seven units there. The vehicle usage for that resident population for the permanent supportive housing is very, very low. At some point in time, some of those households do have some vehicles, but not even compared to your traditional senior population. And so that's been our experience in other jurisdictions and other properties that we continue to own and operate.
All right. Thank you so much. And then one question that I keep hearing every time this gets brought up in conversations is, how soon do you anticipate people will be able to start applying for these units? Let's say we approve this, and then let's assume you get the funding from the state your first go-around by that deadline. How soon do you anticipate that process starting, and when would people be able to go, and where would they go and things like that?
Yeah. Thank you for answering that, or asking that question, especially in a public setting. We really start our interest list for any community when we get our first inquiry, and so that's done through our leasing team and our leasing staff. We've shared that contact information with city staff. We'll also be setting up a website that'll provide additional information relative to the development, how folks can get on that interest list, and then for updates and on the timeline as we progress.
All right. Thank you so much. Did anyone have any follow-up questions or additional comments from the, Commissioner Villock?
Thanks, Chair. In regards to where this sits in the Nacasi property off to the side, kind of in that back corner, if you will, is it secured parking, or is it open?
It's an open parking configuration. Now, that parking sits back behind the building off of the street, so there's a fairly long drive aisle that comes into the parking. The parking also serves as a buffer between us and the industrial use next door, but not a gated access, just given the community, the area that we're in. We do have security cameras on the property, just, you know, with just today's environment, but not a secured gated access.
And then would it be permit that you guys are going to monitor, or is anybody able to park in there?
We do permit parking for our residents, but the reality of a 65-unit building, especially with our onsite manager there on the property, really knows the resident body, the resident population, especially with having 65 units. And you even over, you know, you get to know their resident's vehicles, what's there, so we do have permit parking for our residents, but that doesn't preclude guests, or, you know, say somebody had a family member in town that was visiting from parking there.
Okay.
Yeah.
So in the event that some people from the neighbors come in to park there, what would happen?
So, so let's say we had somebody that was parking there either consistently, or we had some type of overflow situation. We would first provide a warning, our resident manager provides the warning. We do have it posted on the property for towing, so we have the ability to enforce that, but really, we try to give a warning upfront, you know, post something on the vehicle, and then if not, we would tow the vehicle.
Okay. And then in regards to your management of this development, once it gets built, you guys continue to be the, I guess, manager?
We are. We're the owner and the manager, so we always kind of joke and say and jest, when you get us, you get us for life. We're here for the long term, and it's a long-term commitment, not only to our residents, but to the city, and so that management stays in effect. That manager reports up to myself, my partner that I have here with me this evening, but no, we continue to own and manage and operate the community.
Okay. I guess I just have to say for my fellow commissioners up here, I think with the explanation that I got, that I'm a little bit more comfortable with it. I hate the fact that developers could limit parking and then walk away, and then it becomes the city's problem, and that the fact that they're going to have onus of that, I still, I guess, have a difference in opinion that I think seniors 65 and older do have a lot of cars, and I think that there still is need for parking, but I feel like, you know, your guys' professionalism and your knowledge and experience in it rings true to me. I still wish there was more parking, but I think I can support it now, so I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you so much. Commissioner Fuentes, you had a follow-up?
The posted for towing, what are you basing that on? What are you saying on your signs?
It's, actually, I would probably turn over to my partner, Barry. He can speak to-
Is he the sign guy?
He is not a sign guy, but he has a sign, he has a sign expertise. He has picked out towing signs in the past, so-
Okay.
Turn, on the sign, the towing signage, so what that would state and how that's-
Mrs. Fuentes, yes, Barry Cottle, a partner of Todd, and same family, so. We do, at all the entrances, the driveways coming into the parking, there are signs. They're posted, they're metal signs, reflective letters, and they'll see that there is for the residents as permit parking only. The guest parking would be highly identified as being guest, is what it would be, so they know what it is. And as Todd answered earlier, then we watch that, because our manager can control that very easily, is what it is. We do give a notice as some bright red paper, if we see some that's not, shouldn't be there, not parking there. A resident's noted check-in, if they're going to have visitors, if they have a, someone's going to spend the night, is what they're going to do, they're going to check in with the manager, so we know whose car that is. And if they, if they don't, if it is a neighbor, and we get that at times from the industrial or the neighborhood, that somebody comes and stays, they stick out like a sore thumb. So we'll give them that notice, and then we will tow them, and the notice says the same thing, they will be towed. And the last thing to say, that word gets around very quickly if you tow a car. It's not inexpensive to get your car out, even the same day or the next day, so that word gets out, so that's why we do tow. We don't like to tow, but we do, and people then don't park there.
All right. Thank you so much. Any other follow-up questions? Commissioner Ludden?
The last affordable housing project that we approved had, the management had programs to help the residents, you know, improve their income ability, income earning capability and other programs to help them move out of affordable housing into other, maybe more normal types of housing. Do you have any programs like that?
We do. We partner with a number of different social service providers that come in and provide those services for the residents. It's, it's an educational aspect, but it's also an engagement aspect, especially with the senior population. We want to make sure our residents are out of their units, they're involved within their community that they have, that they're interacting, that they're being stimulated, but to specifically speak to, to your question, there is financial education, financial betterment to attain progression out of the units. Little bit different aspect with seniors, though. We see that, you know, from the families, a lot of folks, you know, move on. We do see that with some of our senior populations, but we do see with, you know, with the senior community, a lot of folks, this, this may be, you know, their last place, or maybe, you know, one or two last places that, you know, they'll, they'll spend with us. Thank you.
I do have a follow-up question on that. In terms of reporting, how exactly does that work when you have to maintain like a low, very low income status? Do you guys check annually? Do you check quarterly? Do they have to submit certain types of paperwork to keep their apartment?
Yeah. We're in a very paperwork or compliance-intensive business, so residents, when they first move in, we're documenting their income. You know, they're residing in this unit because their income does not exceed a certain level based upon the affordable unit that they're in. So it's tax returns, it's employment verifications, it's, it's income that they have coming in, and then on an annual basis, we update that. So every resident gets re-qualified on an annual basis, go through that process again, and then from an annual reporting, it's a very intensive process as well. We report to the city, we report to the county, we report to the State of California, we report to the tax credit investor in the development, we report to the lender as well. Because of the tax credits, and those tax credits are also derived from the residents' qualifying, it's a very, it's a very serious process qualifying each of those households, and again, doing it on an annualized basis.
All right. Thank you so much. Do we have any other comments, follow-up questions? No? All right. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
With that, we will go ahead and close the public hearing, and I will consider, do I have a motion to consider approving the items recommended by staff in a second?
Motion to approve.
A second?
All right. And with that, please vote. All right. Thank you so much. And with that, we will go ahead and move to staff comments. Does staff have any comments?
No comments this evening.
All right. Does the city attorney have any comments?
No comments. Thank you.
Thank you for making it in time. And with that, we will go ahead and move over to the planning commission comments. I will start with Commissioner Fuentes.
No comment tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Ludden?
No comments tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Villock?
Good night.
And Commissioner Armando?
No comment, and thank you for your information to this evening.
Yes, and that leaves me. Thank you so much for being here to answer our questions, and thank you for staff for preparing this report and for putting this together to meet the deadline. I understand it is important. I appreciate that we have more senior affordable housing coming to our city. It's important for me, it's important for residents, and hopefully we see a lot of Lake Forest residents moving in there and enjoying those facilities, or at least some. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Our next regular meeting is scheduled for September 9th, 2021. Our next regular meeting is scheduled for September ninth, 2021.